Call the meeting harder. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Heisler.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Holt.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Ridgewitz.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti. Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Orlet. Alderman Schneider.
Here.
Okay, Alderman Hayden advised me that Alderman Galetti called him that he most likely will not be here. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay, so please note that. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Poor.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Jamie Maitreut. Tim Gregwitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer.
Here.
Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belville.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer this evening. I think that's everyone, all the department heads. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask you to please join me in stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing this evening on the agenda is a public hearing. I'm going to officially open the public hearing regarding the designation of the new enterprise zone for the city of Belleville. I'm going to first call before we ask for any comments or any questions from the audience or the Alderman. I'm going to ask on Mr. Gene Narber, who the city council some time ago voted to hire him and his company to guide us through this process of submitting our application for the new enterprise zone criteria for the state. I'm going to ask Gene to give us a brief overview of what we've been faced with and how we're proceeding through this and what we have in front of us tonight. So, Gene?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can you, well, go ahead over there.
Let me grab the, uh...
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few remarks prepared for this evening. First, let me remind anyone who is here for the public hearing to please sign in. We'll provide the sign-in sheet as part of the city's application.
If they're here to speak at the public hearing?
If they're here for the public hearing.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
There is a requirement in addition to providing a sign-in sheet that we have published a notice of this public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation. We have within the required period of time prior to the date of the public hearing. And the, uh, this evening's remarks are being recorded by our court reporter because it's also a requirement that a transcript of this evening's proceedings be provided to the state in our application. So, I would like to speak briefly, Mayor, as you had suggested, about the situation we find ourselves in and about the application itself. The state of Illinois essentially rebooted the enterprise zone program in Illinois through the passage of Public Act 97-09-05, which mandates that all existing enterprise zones will expire on their expiration date. They will expire throughout the next couple of years. And as they expire, the enterprise zone designation will become available for either existing enterprise zones or proposed new enterprise zones to make an application to the state, which the state will then review and decide upon, for a designation of, in essence, a new enterprise zone. That's the process that we're in this evening. This is the area right here outlined in red, which is the proposed new enterprise zone for the city of Belleville. And so, we are in the process of putting together the city's proposal to be delivered to the state of Illinois by close of business December 31st, 2014. Of the 97 enterprise zones which will come up for grabs within the next couple of years, 49 will be available for distribution for municipalities and counties and combinations of counties and municipalities that get their new applica-- or get their application in for new designation prior to December 31st of 2014. So, more than half of the zones that are expiring will then be up for designation or redesignation, depending on who makes an application, starting January 1st, 2015. And we will have the city's application into the state prior to the deadline for those The enterprise zone, or the proposed enterprise zone, I should say, includes approximately 9.68 square miles of property within the city. This area is mostly commercial and industrial property or undeveloped property suitable for commercial and industrial use. The proposed zone includes properties which the city has identified in its recently completed comprehensive plan as locations where it desires to encourage commercial and industrial use. And this includes the West Main Corridor, Bell Valley Industrial Parks area, State Route 15 corridor. The proposed zone also includes downtown Belleville. And as I said, it includes both developed property and undeveloped property. We've been working with staff and others to complete an application so that the materials that are required to be presented to the state have been answered in full and will form an important part of the application that we will make. The city has used St. Clair County as its local labor market area after consultation with staff and the state. We've also provided a series of goals and objectives after discussion with staff, and those include, for the proposed enterprise zone, to improve and increase local sales and real property tax bases, to increase employment opportunities, that is, to both attract new full-time equivalent jobs and retain those in the zone, to promote and expand the city's asset base, and ultimately, improve the quality of life for city residents, to grow, diversify, and expand the city's commercial and industrial base. The plan also identifies one local incentive to be offered in addition to a variety of state incentives that are offered throughout Illinois in enterprise zones. And that local incentive is a 50 percent abatement of real property taxes levied on the increased real property value for a period of five years. This is for commercial and industrial properties, and the city is working to obtain signed resolutions from all of the underlying taxing districts so that this benefit can be provided. The state provides, again, a series of, excuse me, a series of incentives including sales tax abatement on the retailer's occupation tax, on building materials incorporated into buildings that are developed or redeveloped in the enterprise zone, utility tax exemption on gas, electricity, and some administrative charges, as well as a state investment tax credit. There's also a waiving of building permit fees and an expedited building permit process built into the enterprise zone. The city's current enterprise zone has been a tool that the city has used in its economic development efforts. We have worked with staff and have taken a look at information from January 1999 through April of 2014, approximately 15 years. That's what our new application will be for, for 15 years as required by the state. And of those businesses receiving enterprise zone benefits during that period of time, the city has identified private investment of $114 million made by those businesses who have received enterprise zone benefits with a creation or retention of more than 3,250 full-time equivalent jobs. Mr. Mayor, this is an opportunity for public comment. I did want to get those, my comments, into the record, and certainly at this time, if there are any comments.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? And if you do step up to the microphone after I recognize you, we just want to make sure you do sign in so that you're registered for the information. As, Mr., are you for the enterprise zone, sir? About the enterprise zone? Okay, you can step up, make sure you sign your name in there, and come forward and leave your comment. Make your comment.
I already signed in.
Okay.
Personally, I think these enterprise zones are a scam. The big money men are going to buy them up and they're going to get, and all they want is the TIFs, tax breaks, and anything else they can get free from the government. These are just little nickel-and-dime businesses. It's like putting a Band-Aid on somebody that got their leg shot off, if you ask me. Thank you.
Hold it. Before you leave, would you please, for the court reporter, give your name and address?
Stuart Lannert, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. The map is nice of the proposed area. What would have actually been nice is to see what areas got deleted and which areas got added from the current one, although I understand that this is a new zone. We do have a current one. One area I noticed was that the shrine was added to this area. And a question, you know, I understand that the area north of Route 15 is undeveloped, but the area south is quite developed. And what reason do you have to include an area which is such developed and owned by a nonprofit company which doesn't get any tax breaks because they are a nonprofit? As to why that was, would be included in the expansion? Thank you.
Yes, sir?
My name is William Breenan. I live at 5500 Nora Court in Belleville. It is not in the city. It's in an unincorporated area. However, I am precinct committeeman of Belleville 12, appointed, and I feel a responsibility to the voters of that area that they have a full understanding of what's going on here. While I'm not opposed to annexing the shrine in principle, I'm wondering why at this particular time that we're doing that. I'm a little bit out of the loop. I've just come back from Europe after a nine-day trip, and I can report that Germany, Poland, Czechoslovakia are dealing with some of the major things that we're dealing with here in this country. No surprise. I am worried that, why a nonprofit would come into the city and become a liability to the city. I don't have any understanding, or no one has explained to me what will happen to the infrastructure, the upkeep of that infrastructure. I am a Catholic, a lifelong Catholic, and, you know, I'm very happy that we have the shrine. It's a wonderful thing. I've had a number of festivities out there. The infrastructure now is becoming old. I mean, everyone knows there. It's been there a while. So, are we inheriting a liability for the taxpayers of the city of Belleville to maintain those? Will they remain private roads? Will they continue to repair those? I don't know. I don't have the answers to that. And I would really like to have an explanation of that, and I'm sure the taxpayers of Belleville would like to have an explanation of who will be paying for the repair of that infrastructure, which is quite extensive. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else this evening that would like to comment, reference right now, the public hearing, in case you just came in, pertaining to the designation of the new enterprise zone?
Just the public? You're asking for counsel?
I'm going to ask for counsel just a second. Anybody else from the public? Okay, from the city council, is there questions or comments? Please state your name.
Melinda Holt, Alderman Ward, too. I would like to hear Mr. Norber answer those questions about the shrine. I also have some questions about how stiff the competition is for this enterprise zone. Are we competing against every county in the state? Are there limits, population limits? Are we competing only like against like? So, if you could explain that, please.
Well, Gene's coming up to the microphone. I'll answer the first question. The development, the annexation agreement is forthcoming with the shrine, which will answer a number of, if not all, the questions that were just raised by this gentleman. And they will be coming. As we explained in committee two weeks ago when we first introduced this, and the need to explain at that time that the shrine was presenting their petition for annexation was to get the council's consideration of the property. But there is a detailed explanation of the project that they're, that they're going to present, and it will be spelled out. Clear to say, Emily, in the, in the, in the annexation agreement, it'll be, it'll make much of it much clearer, and then there'll be a development agreement if it moves forward in the future. So, without me speculating and without me speaking for the shrine or the developer that's working with them, I think it would be fair to let them answer all those particulars. But those answers are all good questions, and they will all be answered rightly, and stay tuned, we'll get those answers all to you. I think the one question, you know, well, I think the whole thing will be answered by them. I could answer a few of it right now, but that would be unfair. Mr. Narber, you want to answer the, some of the other questions that he, that she raised?
Difficult to know how stiff the competition will be. The state determined that as enterprise zones were coming to the end of their lives that all of the designated ordinances, pardon me, all the designated zones would be open, if you will, for any and all comers. Consequently, there are individual municipalities, groups of municipalities, counties by themselves, counties in association with one or more municipalities that we know will make applications to the state. There's a finite number of these available, and we know from our work and from the work of others that there will be scores of applications this year and in succeeding years. As I said, there are 97 by law now. There are five additional zones called river edge redevelopment zones. Upon the termination of the river edge redevelopment zones, my recollection is long, about 2030. Those zones will become available, those designations will go away, and there will be five more slots available for designation as an enterprise zone. So, it's really a combination of municipalities, villages, counties, unincorporated portions of counties that are competing. There is no population requirement, minimum or maximum. There's a size requirement. You can't be more than 12 square miles unless you're in a multiple jurisdiction enterprise zone, and then you can be larger. But with 9.68 square miles, we have plenty of room to grow, if necessary, over time. And I'm sorry if there were any other questions on that line.
Who is it exactly that makes the decision? Is there a board that this comes before?
As I said, we're assisting the city make an application, and we've filled out all of the information that we have and that we've researched and had discussions with staff and to determine what the goals and objectives are, and that constitutes the application. The application is sent, hand-delivered, actually, to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity will score the application. They have about five or six months to do so. I think we can anticipate there'll be a lot of applications. So, they have five or six months to score the application, and then they will provide those scores to a five-person board, which is constituted by the depart, the head of the Department of Commerce and Econo, excuse me, Economic Opportunity, I believe the head of the Department of Revenue, and three appointees. In essence, all are appointed by the governor. And then, this appointed board will determine which, if any, of the applicants are then designated as enterprise zones.
And are you familiar with the criteria they use for their scoring?
Yes, those are outlined in the application, and we have addressed all of those. And in addition to addressing those and providing the maps that are required, we've also written an introductory narrative for Belleville on, on the enterprise zone and for the application itself.
Is it possible to appear before this board, or does your score just go forward and they discuss it?
We do not know if it's possible to appear before the board or not. That is not contained in the, in the law, in the rules or regu, nor in the rules or regulations. We haven't seen any language that says it's permissible to do so. On the other hand, I don't think I've seen any language that says it's impermissible.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Hayden? Yes. A couple of quick questions. You appropriately addressed the benefits of the enterprise zone. I just want to ask for the record, I believe we touched on this before, but it is correct, Ms. Norber, that in drawing the lines, we can just go down by streets to connect?
Yes, we can, we can go down by streets, and in fact, we can use a strip three feet wide.
Three feet wide?
Yes, sir, that's what's called out in, in the application.
And I think one of the questions that was, one of the public people were touching upon, I think the key question that they're asking, which I would assume sends us in the boundaries, is yes, is that we can bring in areas that are actually outside the city limits at this time?
The annexation is in process, and so, we will have property that we trust will be entirely inside of the boundary of the city at the time the application is made. Yes, sir.
But, but no, no land other than what's in the city at the current are potentially going to be annexed?
Yes.
Would be eligible, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Schneider?
Yes, Alderman Schneider. If we're getting property that is not in the city limits, so that means it's coming from the county or the townships, do we have to get their approval to take their, take their land? Because if some, the shrine doesn't pay the taxes, but there, if there is property that is tax revenue generated, what happens to the county or the township that's going to be losing that and we're taking it? Will we owe anything to them?
The 406 acres at the Shrine of Our Lady of the Snows oblates petition Economic Development Annexation Committee two weeks ago approximately is all their property. There's no other, there's no other property involved other than the shrine oblates property. And currently, you know, it's all non-taxable, to my knowledge, as, you know, far as the property goes.
Okay, then, the gentleman brought up about the infrastructure and the streets. We now have streets, as you stated just a few minutes ago, up in Streets and Grades that we have not been able to take care of. Here we are asking to take on more. I just see that really not making much sense because we can't take care of what we have, but yet we're going to ask for more. So, if we do take this and all this out by the shrine and that starts to need repairs because it's old and that, guess whose streets is going to get fixed first, theirs, not the people that's been waiting? We haven't oiled and chipped a street in years.
Alderman Schneider, if I may, I think, as I tried to say a minute ago, I think you're speculating of, you know, yes, it's true. They presented their petition, and we need to, as I've explained to the council, to please consider this for part of the map, okay? And that's what we're doing tonight. But I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves. I'm not telling you right now that we have any responsibility with these roads. I think we need to all get our hands on the annexation petition, annexation agreement that will hopefully be here in a matter of days or a week or so, and then we will share it, and then we will vote on that, and you will, I truly believe many or all of your questions will be answered. And I don't want to get way out in front of this and start speculating and raise a, as we explained to the committee two weeks ago, this project has a lot of potential, and it, it's, we would never bring it forward if we didn't think it was a win-win for Belleville and the shrine. So, I think at this point now, just trust, if, and if, and if you don't, if this council for some reason doesn't see that and that doesn't get annexed, then we eliminate this from our map before we turn it in. So, don't get, don't get all, I guess, ahead of ourselves here. I think there's some answers to these questions that will be very detailed, very specific, and I believe very positive for everyone, but we need to get that document here presented. It wasn't quite ready tonight, so I couldn't, you know, we couldn't share that at the same meeting, but, but I think, I think your questions that a few of you are raising will be answered. And, and, you know, I'm very wishy-wary. We're not, this project is going to be a benefit if it moves forward the way the dialogue has been between the shrine and all of us.
But later on into the agenda, we're going to be voting on motion to approve the boundary for the proposed new enterprise zone.
You've got to have a starting point, and that's what we're doing tonight.
I think our enterprise zone is large enough. We right now have enough, if, if we do get businesses to come, they're going to want sales tax abatement, they're going to want a rebate on their real estate tax.
It's, it's...
And we're right now where we need to think of what we have here and take care of. What, if we could take care of all the problems we have right now, what are you going to do for police and fire if we?
Alderman Schneider?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to vote. No, I, when it comes to that part...
I just wish you, I wish, I wish, I would just ask that you would wait to get all the facts.
Well, then, we shouldn't be voting on...
No, you understand, we were very clear that the timeliness of this, so that you have to have the public hearing so many days before, you know, there's just, there's a whole timeline, and we're not doing anything wrong. We're, we're doing it totally by the book, and we're just explaining that while tonight we may not have all the details, but, but what we're saying to you is this: We have a project that the staff and I feel very confident is, is an outstanding project for Belleville's future on our doorsteps. And to jump to conclusions and to make accusations before we ever get all the facts would be a mistake. All we're asking tonight is to collude this in the preliminary map, and if it, in the next few weeks ahead, doesn't meet the majority of this council's expectations, then we will eliminate it. But I will tell you, I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised of what, and I've, and I have talked with you in the past where we could, and I think most of you are pretty well-informed, that this project has got some things potentially that can really move Belleville in the right direction. So, that's, that's all I can say there. I just, I ask for your patience because I really think we're judging that, some of these things, and there is time to reduce this if, if that doesn't meet your expectations as we move forward. Anybody else have any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Remind us the length of time this enterprise zone will last.
It's 15 years with the possibility of a 10-year extension, Mr. Narber?
Yes, it's 15 years. I'm sorry, I should have addressed that. 15 years. It will be, if approved by the state, it will be reviewed after 13 years. If it's reviewed favorably, then, in addition to the 15 years, an additional 10 years can be tacked on, a total potentially of 25 years. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, thank you. So, it's really similar to what we have now with the 20, with like 23, right? 25, okay. Any other questions? Comments? I'll give the public one last time. Is there any other comments or questions? This is a formality that we had to by law, a step we had to take this evening. I thank you for bearing with us and listening and trying to understand. For some of you, it's brand-new information. For other views, others of you who've been coming to council meetings for a long time, you've heard about the enterprise zone for, for many years. And it is a tool, as Mr. Narber said, it is a tool that we've been using for many years to help compete with business retention and with attracting new businesses. And when your city does not sit on an interstate, as you've heard me say many times, these tools are very important to us to try to compete in this market we're in today. So, I thank you for listening, and if there's no further questions, I'm going to close this public hearing. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Narber. Okay, now, as we move forward, we're going to get into... Okay, now as we move forward, we're going to get into public participation. And we will open public participation. When you raise your hand, I will call on you. When called on, you will come to the microphone and, and give your name and address in approximately two to three minutes. And I'm just going to reiterate that there's rules published here about, you know, basically respect and responsibility, good character traits, and I ask that we all follow those. So I will now open public participation for tonight's meeting. Are there any comments pertaining to tonight? Yes, sir, in the rear of the room?
Stuart Lanard, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville, Illinois. Mark Kern could sell ice cubes at a Mex- Askemos, and he, you talk to him anytime, and you'll see that airport out there is doing fantastic, even though they lose 11 or 12 million dollars every year. So really, it's hard to tell what's a good deal and what's not. And the mayor's wife was mugged, gun battle on West Main, sex predator on loose, armed robbery on a regular basis, drugers for judges, various shootings here and there, whole thing full of crime blotters from the 2, 300 North Second Street where Robin Jenkins is running her drug operation right across from Franklin School. And the Bellevle Police Department is using my run-in with Robin Jenkins to keep me from getting a gun permit because she filed false police reports against me and told all kinds of lies. So finally, I went and got a lawyer, and I took her to small claims court and got a $70 judgment against her, and she had to pay $206 plus court costs, and that shut her big mouth up. And now, the chief of police or somebody in the Bellevle Police Department is telling, saying me, and I got it in writing, and you got a packet up there, and I passed out some letters here to the alderman, but you got the full story up there, you and the attorney. And they are saying that I'm a danger to myself, a danger to others, and a danger to the public at large. Now, am I supposed to shoot myself or lock myself in my house, or what? There's all these criminals running around. I have no felony whatsoever, a few misdemeanors, and I'm, I'm considered a danger to the community.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Chief?
Just to respond, this is Chief Clay. We looked into the claim that the Bellevle Police Department is denying or objected to Mr. Lanard receiving concealed carry permit. That is absolutely not the truth. We had nothing to do with it. As a matter of fact, we checked with the Illinois State Police today to see what the status of and why he cannot have concealed carry. The Illinois State Police notified our liaison, which is Captain John Moody, who I appointed to be on that objection board, and said that they are the ones who denied him the right to carry. And they did so because they said he has had five or more arrests within the last seven years. Now, I looked at his arrest record, which is readily available to all of you, it's public record, and he has 13 or more arrests. I'm not talking about convictions, but that's what they use, that's their criteria. 13 or more arrests on his record in St. Clair County since 2009. We have not objected to anyone in this county, anyone, who has applied for concealed carry weapon. We have never went on the objection data website, not once. That is strictly the Illinois State Police that are denying him that, the right to carry. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Ms. Wilson?
Ms. Wilson, 322 West Ice Street, Belleville. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I respectfully ask, this is the Belleville City Council meeting, that you no longer permit issues that pertain to St. Clair County to be presented here in the city council meeting. If there is an issue, it needs to be next door, it takes up valuable time. So I would respectfully ask that you discontinue this. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening like to say anything this evening? If not, I'm going to close public participation. And we're going to move on to... Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman White had asked me about making a statement on behalf of his neighborhood. Alderman White?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I, I live in New Yorkshire subdivision. I'm also in the homeowners association. And I've had, unfortunately, I was away when the tornado went through, but I've had many comments about response from all departments in the city, the fire department, the police department, sanitation. Everybody's just delighted with the, with the result they've gotten from the city out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, street department spent a number of days out there. I don't think they're done yet. Still a little bit more. They're in Maple Hills, so I too would, would want to thank all of our employees who, who went above and beyond working with us, and we, we worked together and got a lot accomplished. And I think all the neighbors in both those subdivisions, I, I got the same calls and emails that they're very pleased, so. It was a good feeling to be able to help, and we were very fortunate, no one was hurt. And while there was quite a bit of property damage, it can be fixed, so we're happy with that. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And tonight, we have a couple of recognitions, or presentations, I guess. We'll start with presentations first. I'm going to read this first proclamation, and, and bear with me just a second, the proclamation, whereas the city of Belleville is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when, when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and is why Belleville actively works to be a community of character. And whereas Belleville is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and the conviction to the individual's ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas it is evident that with the establishment of the Basic Initiative, Belleville's Community of Character Initiative, and that is evident through community-wide projects such as Paint the Town, The Mission Continues Southside Park Project, and with the Bellevle Helping Belleville Service Project, as well as the countless continuing services rising from our schools, churches, service agencies, and businesses, which has helped establish Belleville's status as an all-America city in 2011. Whereas Belleville chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile, to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community, and will honor such individuals at its Annual Citizens of Character Dinner. And whereas Belleville acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 500 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day. As Belleville being a community of character continues to highlight the belief that communities are made stronger through individuals and organizations who dedicate themselves to go the extra mile in volunteerism and service. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2014, to be Extra Mile Day in the city of Belleville, and encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day, to go the extra mile in his or her own life, and to acknowledge all of those around us who are inspirational in their efforts to make their organizations, families, communities, country, and our city, and our world, a better place. I think that is, does speak a lot, and when you just think about the fact that we just, as a community, just completed an unbelievable, and it's not even done totally yet, we're still a few more aspects, but with the 200th celebration, took an extraordinary of volunteers this year, above and beyond everything that we do every year. And I'm very proud of all the citizens in Belleville who went that extra mile every day around here. So, the next thing, Darryl Coons, who's now, well, he's always had a couple of hats, but he's going to come forward tonight, and we ask him to give a few remarks about the Bellevle Helping Belleville Day on Saturday, November 8th. And this is something that I think we can all still get involved in.
Yeah, we follow up the Day of...
Service?
Service on November the 1st. By just seven days later, we were trying to get closer to Veterans Day, and our projects were originally designed to try to find veterans to help. We didn't uncover quite as many as we'd like, but we're working on that still. One of the things that Belleville, as a community, has become known for recently is that we are an example of collective impact, which is various groups coming together around one cause and trying to meet that, that need, that cause, where individually, we couldn't do it quite as well. And we do that generally without worrying about who gets credit for it. Many of you have participated in our Day of Service when it was back around September the 11th. This year, September was just a bit busy, and so we decided that we would look at November. And so we're calling our day Bellevle Helping Belleville Day. The Belleville 200 Committee, Belleville Americor, the Community Development Network, the Y, First United Presbyterian Church, Cascatch, Cascatch Engineering, and the Basic Initiative have come together to help where we can. And so on that Saturday, we'll install an accessibility ramp on VFW Post 1739 on West Main. We'll install a ramp for an individual who was a civilian employee of Scott Air Force Base, lives down on Fahy Place. We'll work on at least two homes on Grandview Drive. We'll address several issues on South Church, and we'll help with a number of needs at the Don Bosco Center. We've been assured of several donations to help with the material costs, so you don't have to worry about that. We're now working to get enough volunteers, and we're also looking for some lunches to feed those volunteers. What we'd like for you to do as a city council is help us get the word out that we need volunteers and we need a few sack lunches. And we'd love to have you join us if you're available, even if all you can come and do is come and cheer us on. We'd love that. But if you can get your hands dirty, it might look real good to the citizens to see their aldermen out there. We're hoping that this day is going to be not just a continuation of what we've been doing, but it's going to be a step up. What we're looking forward to is, once a month, doing something like this where folks go outside their home to help their neighbors, or go across town to help their neighbors there, and have Belleville Helping Belleville to become that community of character. Thanks.
Darryl, thanks. There's been a tremendous amount of good that's been going on for a long time, thanks to a lot of individuals. And, and I, I am really proud of this city for its volunteer spirit. And we just want to continue to grow it and, and reach out and help our neighbors because, just like the other day when the tornado hit unexpectedly in the east and southeast part of town, none of us know when we might need a hand. And that was, it was, it was a wonderful sight when I was out there on a couple of occasions those days, seeing the number of neighbors that came out to help people. Pick up debris, clean up the, it was just, it was, it was just, made you feel good. Made you feel good about our town. So thanks, Darryl, and thanks to the efforts that all of you are putting forth on this. At this time, I have another proclamation. And, and we have all this only because there's so much good things going on in this city and so many great people. Rachel, do you want to come forward? And if you don't mind, I'm going to stand, I, I can read better from here, but why don't you come right up here and I'm going to present this to you as soon as I read it. Rachel Jackson Bramwell is, I guess, the executive director? You're right, fine, right here. Turn around, face the group, I'll read this to you. But you're the executive director, right, at Project Compassion? And she's been here before with us, and, and she's been, well, she, she's been in my office, but not because she's in trouble. She's been in my office trying to talk about how we can collaborate and, and help people and help young girls. And, and she's reached out, I know Mr. Schneider, Jim has worked with her, and, and a number of our various programs have cooperated and worked together. And we're making progress. So today, I offer this proclamation for her project. Whereas on October 29th, 2005, Project Compassion NFP was founded with six volunteers. And whereas the mission of Project Compassion NFP, and it says PC-NFP, is dedicated to promotion of empowerment and enhancement of homeless, low-income, and disadvantaged women and children, with a focus of girls. And whereas Project Compassion has created a volunteer database of over 2,500 volunteers. And whereas Project Compassion provided over 45,000 homeless and low-income individuals and families with program services and resources. And whereas Project Compassion started and implemented a self-esteem and character-based program in a school districts throughout, in school districts throughout St. Clair County, Illinois. And whereas Project Compassion NFP is the creator of Girls on the, on Purpose Tour, a one-day conference that is offered to girls to learn resources and skills to empower them to continue their education and avoid, and avoid negative behavior. And whereas Project Compassion NFP is the creator of the Girl Enrichment Programs, Empower Me and Imagine Me. And whereas Project Compassion NFP is the founder of Compassion Day, once a month, once a day, one day, once a month, one day of service, where love and kindness is offered to the homeless and low-income families in our community by offering hygiene and seasonal supplies. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, do hereby proclaim October 29th, 2014, to be Compassion Day in the city of Belleville. Rachel, I present this to you, and I say thank you, because ladies and gentlemen, this is another example of all the good that's being shared and all the energy, and there's a lot of her supporters here flashing, flashing cameras right now.
Thank you so much, Mayor Eckert, and thank you so much to the city council and just the city of Belleville. When I first started Project Compassion, I was 25, and it was just my way of giving back into a community in which I lived in. And seeing that, I grew up in Belleville, and seeing that there's so much good, and sometimes the, the bad and the sadness and poverty can overshadow that. But I believe that I had enough in me to make a difference in my community. And so hopefully, by me standing up, doing that, I have inspired others, young girls, men and women, to stand up and just make a difference. This means everything to me, to be able to exist here in Belleville, considering I have once stood behind this mic. And to now be able to exist and be able to be such a positive example of what you can do when one person takes a stand. Thank you so much, and this means everything.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. I can actually say, this is kind of a fun city council meeting so far. I, I am very sincere in that we are blessed. Last night, many of us were at the Rachel Harmony Dinner, and Rachel and I sat right behind each other and talked a little bit there. There is a lot of outstanding things going on in this community and around us that, that really make you feel good and excited about the future of our, our kids and this, in this community and others. So keep up the great work, and to all of you who are involved in this particular project, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. At this time, I call Chief Clay and Lieutenant Matt Icecant forward. And if they'll come to the microphone, while they're coming forward, I'll just tell you that the chief's going to say a few words about this young man here, who we are extremely very proud of, and he's just accomplished something that, to my knowledge, he's the very first police officer in the city of Belleville to accomplish this. Chief?
Indeed, he is, that, that I'm aware of. Matt just recently graduated, that would have been the 257th session at the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He is the first of a new tradition that was started. I have somebody else already in the pipeline. It is a 10-week course, it is a very physical, very physical, challenging course. You have to do a lot of running, a lot of shooting, but then there's also academics, book knowledge, there is networking. Matt had a lot of things to do. He was very, he was my first choice on that thing. There's been, I think, 47,400... There's been, I think, forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-four graduates that he joins in that group. I don't know how big your group was, but
Two-eleven.
Two-hundred-and-eleven people that went to that. All over, all across the world. They come together, they network. I think that's probably the strongest, uh, aspect of that. But just a little bit about what they, they go through, he had, uh, they do, uh, such things as legal issues, behavioral sciences. They really get into profiling and those types of things, uh, investigative interviewing, death investigations, officer-involved shootings, those types of things. But the physical fitness is also always there, it never leaves you. I think you did several five Ks and all sorts of things that he had to do down there. So we're very proud to have him back. He was very successful. They gave him an enormous, enormous certificate. We don't happen to have that with us here today. And I just wanted to say that to you, you folks, and let you know what he did. We did put it up on our Facebook, so if you're not aware, that it is up there. But I thought it fitting that we acknowledged this, this young man. I see him as a future chief of police in our department. Uh, he, uh, right now is the commander of our special operations group, and he is a kid that I, and I call you a kid because I'm an old man, that, uh, I rely on extensively. So thank you very much.
I, I, I couldn't agree with the chief more. This has been a, a privilege watching Matt Icecant, uh, grow in this department, and he's, he's excelled, um, in so many ways. I know Matt has not only all the education, uh, master's degree and bachelor's degree in criminal, uh, justice, but he's now with this FBI Academy. This is, like I said, the first officer that we've had the privilege to send that, first of all, would, uh, uh, accept the challenge because it is a very rigorous, uh, uh, course. And, um, I, I, our sincere congratulations and appreciation for all your efforts, and, uh, we're excited. I know we talked briefly a little bit, but he's bringing back a lot of neat things that the chief and I are talking to him about, things that the city's gonna benefit from, uh, with, uh, looking at some different initiatives and the way other people do things, and there's some real benefit to the time that we shared him those ten weeks. Long time to lose him from the department, but it was, uh, it's gonna be very beneficial. So, thanks, Matt. At this time, that concludes, concludes, uh, a long list of recognitions and presentations tonight, but I want to go to the regular meeting now. We have the approval of the city council minutes from October sixth, two thousand and fourteen. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the city council meeting minutes of October sixth, two thousand and fourteen.
Motion by, motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I have, uh, two points that I'd make, like to make about minutes. I'd like to open a dialogue about minutes and maybe carry it into next meeting rather than trying to do it tonight, give you a chance to think about it. And I say dialogue rather than debate because dialogue is a real good, actual listening to each other. There are two points that I'd like to make and have you consider for discussion next month. First of all, our minutes are seventeen pages long. I know of no other organization that has minutes that long. And I could see, when we started it a few years ago, there were some people that felt that we should, uh, put more in the minutes. But to me, now that we have the video available, I think we could go back to the regular forms of minutes that show basically what the agenda was, what was discussed, uh, what the motions were, and how the votes were taken. That's how agenda, uh, minutes usually are presented. The second topic I'd like everybody to think about is that, uh, I think that, uh, putting attachments to minutes is probably not the best thing to do unless those attachments have been thoroughly discussed in the meeting. Now, the reason I say that is that the minutes are supposed to reflect what actually happened at the meeting. And if somebody attaches something that was not thoroughly discussed in the meeting or put in those words, it's not really a true reflection of the meeting. Now, I'd like to do this as a, as a nonpartisan act, and therefore, even though Mr. Hayden has two things attached to night, tonight's meeting, I'm going to vote for them because I don't want to be disruptive. But I would like us to think about how we handle minutes in the future, about whether attachments are appropriate, and maybe we could have some discussion next, next month, uh, next meeting. That would be two weeks from now. And I do that so that you have some time to think about it because what often happens is when we get at this table and we think in the moment, we get a little heated, and I don't think that's appropriate. I would like to say that I will vote for this this evening because I think the, the attachments were presented in good faith, and that's something we should discuss next time.
Alderman Holt.
Um, this is a little bit off-topic, but would you consider having that discussion in the ordinance and legal committee rather than
Actually, I was gonna even suggest that's where it might start. And, and, and encourage the other aldermen who have concerns or have an interest to go to that next meeting and, and maybe, uh, because you have a little bit more time supposedly in a committee meeting, it's a little smaller focus, shorter agenda, that you could maybe have some exchange of conversation, some dialogue, and I like your, I like your terminology, and, and then we can bring it back after that. So, would, would, would that be appropriate?
I, I see that as very appropriate, it's just that I chair it, and I didn't want to ring my own bell too much, you know?
Okay.
I don't want, as chairman, I don't necessarily want to guide all the conversation, but I think our committee can do that without
Right, if you would put that on the agenda, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
That will be, we will not discuss this at next month's council meeting because we'll discuss it at the ordinance meeting.
Right, and which is the second Tuesday, right after, okay? So, uh, the motion tonight is to approve and accept the minutes as presented, and there's a second, and we noted Mr. Cincilla's remarks about sending a dialogue on these concerns back to ordinance first and then bring it back to council after some discussion occurs there, which was just healthy. Uh, hearing all that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have claims, payroll, and disbursements. What's your pleasure?
I move that we accept and file the claims, payroll, and disbursements.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Heisler. Discussions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a housing report of cash receipts fiscal year two thousand and fourteen to fifteen. What's your pleasure? Yes, ma'am?
I move we accept and file the housing report of cash receipts for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen to twenty fifteen.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Cybert. Discussion. All in favor of accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman, under oral reports, Alderman Cincilla.
Uh, I'd make a motion to approve the boundary for the proposed new enterprise zone as presented in our packets.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman, um, Cincilla, second by Alderman Cybert. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Um, motion from Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion from the Finance Committee. First motion is to extend the lease for office space at seven-twenty West Main to Dennis Jackowitz and Mark G. Schneider and Keith Kalish for twenty-five-hundred dollars per month through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, and to extend the lease on a month-to-month basis, starting January first, two thousand and fifteen, for the same monthly rental amount. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. It's Schrader, just as a technicality, but it's, it's printed right in here. We have motion and second to, to deal with this lease that, uh, Mr. Horner has worked with the attorneys from that office at seven-twenty with, and this just gives them a chance to look a little longer for a space. Uh, they've reduced the space from what they had before. Unfortunately, one of the attorneys in that office recently died, uh, was part of it, and they've reduced her kind of, but, but this will give them a little bit of time, and we're not, we're still waiting for the architect. We haven't gone out for bid. We're not, you know, at this point in time, it's not an issue, and we'd agree to spread in here that, as expressed in here, that we'd go month-to-month after the first of the year. Everybody understand that? Uh, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion from the Finance Committee. First motion is to extend the lease for office space at seven-twenty West Main to Dennis Jackowitz and Mark G. Schneider and Keith Kalish for twenty-five-hundred dollars per month through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, and to extend the lease on a month-to-month basis, starting January first, two thousand and fifteen, for the same monthly rental amount. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. It's Schrader, just as a technicality, but it's, it's printed right in here. We have motion and second to, to deal with this lease that, uh, Mr. Horner has worked with the attorneys from that office at seven-twenty with, and this just gives them a chance to look a little longer for a space. Uh, they've reduced the space from what they had before. Unfortunately, one of the attorneys in that office recently died, uh, was part of it, and they've reduced her kind of, but, but this will give them a little bit of time, and we're not, we're still waiting for the architect. We haven't gone out for bid. We're not, you know, at this point in time, it's not an issue, and we'd agree to spread in here that, as expressed in here, that we'd go month-to-month after the first of the year. Everybody understand that? Uh, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Um, motion from Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion from the Finance Committee. First motion is to extend the lease for office space at seven-twenty West Main to Dennis Jackowitz and Mark G. Schneider and Keith Kalish for twenty-five-hundred dollars per month through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, and to extend the lease on a month-to-month basis, starting January first, two thousand and fifteen, for the same monthly rental amount. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. It's Schrader, just as a technicality, but it's, it's printed right in here. Um, we have motion and second to, to deal with this lease that, uh, Mr. Horner has worked with the attorneys from that office at seven-twenty with, and this just gives them a chance to look a little longer for a space. Uh, they've reduced the space from what they had before. Unfortunately, one of the attorneys in that office recently died, uh, was part of it, and they've reduced her kind of, but, but this will give them a little bit of time, and we're not, we're still waiting for the architect. We haven't gone out for bid. We're not, you know, at this point in time, it's not an issue, and we'd agree to spread in here that, as expressed in here, that we'd go month-to-month after the first of the year. Everybody understand that? Uh, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year thirteen, fourteen audit reports. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Um, Jamie or Kevin, do either one of you want to say anything? I know you spoke at Finance, but, Kevin, you want, I mean, the rest of the councils here, you have a general statement? He's our auditor.
Just had, just had another good year in all your areas. I know we went through pretty detailed different types of areas, so we're probably going to go along with them. Just had another good year.
Any questions for the auditor? I know you've had this stuff for some time. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from salaries to other professional services in the city clerk's budget to cover parliamentary procedure training costs. So moved.
Second.
and then turn around and have new members. And then after rethinking that, I realized, well, if proper procedure's in place, wouldn't it be easier for a new Alderman to come in and understand there are rules, and you abide by those rules? And this is run properly and professionally, and we spend twenty-five to thirty million dollars a year of taxpayer money, and I think it's worth twenty-two hundred dollars that we do it in a professional manner, and that everyone's, like Mr. Kinsella said, this isn't a place for emotion. This is a place for boardsmanship, professionalism, and making tough decisions, you know, that affect people's lives. And so I think this is well worth it. I think we should do it now, and, um, no need to wait. Let's get it done. And, uh, I think our meetings will be shorter, more proficient, and, um, we'll all get to get out of here.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes, thank you. I, I was just gonna add that, uh, you know, based on, you know, some of the, the confusion that we have run into the, the last, uh, few, uh, meetings, uh, and, and I believe the city attorney has mentioned in the past that, uh, of looking into this, uh, there's, there's no more than, uh, as they say, the present. Uh, I, I would assume, uh, let's move forward now and, uh, get it going.
Alderman Schneider?
So, with all the discussion we've had, um, I'll make a motion to approve it, to go ahead and do the, uh, professional...
We, we already have a motion.
Okay.
We already have a motion, and a second.
I know, got that part.
Alderman Kinsella?
Actually, if you read this motion, it just says to transfer funds, but we mean you can go ahead and spend it.
I appreciate that.
Let's, let's, let's say that.
Well, let's clarify. Would you, would you, Alderman Sillsby, who made the second?
I did.
That's what we had talked about in Finance.
Would you, would you go ahead and elaborate that not only transfer the money, but to go ahead and activate this as soon as possible?
Right, I will amend the motion to approve the transfer of twenty-five hundred dollars for salaries to other professional services in the city clerk's budget to cover parliamentary procedure training costs as soon as possible.
I agree.
Okay, so we agree to that. The motion's been made and amended, and, uh, is there any further discussion before we vote?
Can we ask the clerk to check with the lady if we are allowed to videotape it?
Yes, I didn't ask her that directly, but after speaking with her, I, I don't believe it'll be a problem, but I did not ask that, so I won't.
Are we going to strongly encourage everyone who is eligible to attend?
I, I think what we ought to do, I think you gotta ask that question, how many people, maybe some of the chairman of the committees?
Right, I'm gonna send out a personal invitations to a hundred and forty-six people at least right now.
But can she do that many?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I wanna make sure, that, that it'll still have the meeting and that we don't violate...
And she can involve, you know, the Alderman more than anyone else, you know, um, but she can handle a crowd.
That'll be determined. We'll have to determine the location. This may not be the best sitting, setting if we get a hundred and forty-six people. I think we might be a little bit tight. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question. I understand she's written a book on parliamentary procedure.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you find out if the city, if we buy it as a group, if we could get a discount on her book, if we want the book? I know, I was thinking about buying it, and then I thought, well, if she's willing to make a discount, if we, you know, if everybody bought it together and bought, would I?
Well, ask her that.
Yeah, and we could. Go ahead. I, I have money in my budget, too. We could purchase a book for everyone so they could study it beforehand and be prepared.
Alderman Davidson?
Uh, I, I guess I lost you, Dallas. We're gonna invite a hundred and forty-six people from your, from your, uh...
The, the list of city committees and boards?
Right, just the city boards and commissions and committees.
So are we gonna spread the cost, or are we gonna assume the cost for everyone?
It's, it's all city of Belleville people.
It's all our budget.
You know, a lot of volunteers on commissions and...
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, those are...
For a hundred and forty-six city employees?
Well, with...
No, the zoning board, the library board...
Yeah, the planning commission, all the different parks board, they would all, if not all, we'll see how it goes, we'll talk, see what she says. At, at a minimum, we'd certainly try to encourage the chairperson, but maybe all of them.
Sure.
Sure.
If she says it's okay, and we can find a venue that she thinks that's still meaningful for her training, then I think we ought to do, open it up to all of them. So that was something we didn't talk about at Ardenance Committee. We didn't, we didn't talk about that.
Right, good point.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second to, uh, transfer, not only transfer the money and, and, uh, uh, that's necessary to make this happen, but to, uh, proceed, uh, as soon as possible. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're on to the last one there.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman, uh, Schmidt. Any discussions? Yes, ma'am?
I don't have any attachments. Tell me what those are.
They are on the referendum, on the, um, resolution at the back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I'm fast of my...
This one. Thirty-two oh four. Oh, okay, there it is. Sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, recommended, uh, amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. Any further discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden. Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Cybert?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a recommendation here from the Streets and Graves and the City Engineer to approve our demolition services from Hank Excavating any amount of one hundred nine thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty cents. So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Hayden. These are, for the public's sake, these are six properties basically at the intersection on both sides of F Street and North Illinois. They have to do with, uh, the North Illinois Streetscape Project, which we're hoping to be able to, uh, get the first shovels full of dirt in the spring, and this is the first step, and with, these would potentially be down before Christmas. So we have a motion, we have a second. Does everybody understand that? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, communications.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, communications A, B, C, and D in Reed's group unless there's an objection.
I have a problem. Uh, we have a motion by Alderman Hayden to, uh, let all, uh, A, B, C, and D read as a group, uh, and Alderman Cybert, uh, uh, second that. All in favor of reading those communications as a group, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, communication from Belleville Township High School District two oh one requesting street closure, police assistance, and barricades for the eighth annual Race for Character on Sunday, February first, two thousand fifteen. B, communication from the city of Belleville to approve opening City Hall Lobby on Saturday, December thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, from eight AM to three PM for the annual Gingerbread Cookie Walk. C, communication from Belleville Tourism, requesting a second block from High to Jackson, blocked off at six PM and opened back up at seven thirty PM on November thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Uh, one police presence just in case for pedestrians of traffic controlled by High Street for expect delays filmed in Belleville for the movie premiere on the red carpet of Lincoln Theater. D, communication from Belleville Police Department requesting to donate light bar switch box for controlling the light bar, siren box, prisoner transport seal, our seat, prisoner shield, and push bumper to the Fayetteville Police Department from the city's spare ground Victoria parts inventory.
Motion for...
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Davidson?
Uh, yeah, uh, just had a question, and C, right at the end there, red carpet at Lincoln Theater, in honor of Belleville's...
It was, it was, uh, actually, they, uh, they did that, uh, Belleville movie, as part, originally part of the two-hundred kind of, uh, they were kinda excited, but...
Belleville two-hundred, is that...
Yeah, and, and this was a follow-up. They had such a fun time and good, good experience. It's not really that the two-hundred committee's really had anything invested in it or anything, but Kathleen Lindar with Tourism was excited. The guy was a hometown guy that brought it here, and, and it's brought a lot of attention and PR to, uh, the city and, and certainly to the Lincoln.
So, so, what I'm just getting, the language, "in honor of Belleville," should we cross it out? You didn't read it.
Right, I, I crossed it out. We contemplated saying two-hundredth, and then I read it, and I thought, well, you know, so I just did not say it.
Yeah, that's, either way. So we have a motion and a second to approve all those communications. Correct? Who was this? Hayden and Schmidt. Anything further far as discussion? All in favor of approving those communications as just read, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty-two oh three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Anthony.
They changed the number.
I'm sorry?
It's thirty-two oh four. They give us to do one at a time.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, read by title only, resolution thirty-two oh four. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, resolution number thirty-two oh four, resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, two thousand fourteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, two thousand fifteen.
Motion to approve, resolution thirty-two oh four.
Okay, hold on here. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, and second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on thirty-two oh four? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ardenance says I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ardenance number seventy-eight twelve.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on reading by title only? All in favor of reading by title only, that ardenance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number seventy-eight twelve, a zoning ordinance regarding case sixty-one, September fourteenth, Victor, uh, Victor L. Horsley, DPM LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby to approve seventy-eight twelve, seconds by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Okay, under unfinished business, Alderman Schneider had asked that we put a consideration, uh, by her request to review the video segment of the September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen city council meeting during this meeting. Alderman Sillsby?
I have a statement I'd like to make concerning this item. With all respect to Alderman, uh, Schneider and her concern about a discussion involving her and the mayor at a previous council meeting, specifically September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, I have an objection to this being part of the agenda. I realize and respect Alderman Schneider's concerns and wanting to address these concerns. The issue is not something for this entire council to be engaged in. This is a matter between Alderman Schneider and the mayor. It has nothing to do with official council business that we deal with within our council meetings. Although there is heated debate at times over the issues, when personality and disagreements arise outside the issues, it should be resolved between the two parties in a private meeting. More can be accomplished when one-on-one discussion is held. I strongly suggest that Alderman Schneider and the mayor schedule a time to meet to review Alderman Schneider's concerns and come to some type of resolution. It is only through a cooperative spirit that any concern or disagreement can be resolved for the betterment of both individuals. Therefore, I make a motion to deny the request to review the video segment of September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen city council meeting during tonight's meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, and second by Alderman Schmidt. I'll open at, uh, his comments and that motion. Up for, uh, comments. Alderman Kinsella?
Your Honor, I, I think, uh, an appropriate way to handle a situation where you find something that is, is not in the minutes and you'd like it added, would be to write up the way you would like to word it and pass it out to all the Aldermen before the meeting. I, I mean, just would be a smooth way to do it, because then we could agree on wording. And I think that that's still, uh, an option available to, uh, Alderman Schneider, that she could, she could write up what she wants to have put in the minutes, because truly they are minutes. But, um, on the other hand, I, I don't think that, we're not a football game. I don't think we're doing instant replays. And I don't mean to be Snyder making that comment. I just don't think that that's part of what we do here. There is another way of doing it, and that is by writing something up that you'd like to have put in the minutes, and we'll usually approve that if it's reasonable.
Okay, uh, and I, I wanted to say what Alderman Sillsby said. Um, I'm willing to still, and, and you have not, Alderman Schneider, you have not requested, but I'd be more than glad to sit with you, um, and, and to have a discussion on this. I think tonight, you can tell the meeting has, we, I'm, we're trying here. I think there's some good, uh, attempt, and the meeting's gone very smooth tonight, and I'm certainly trying to be more mindful of both sides of the room when I call on people. It, it's not always easy monitoring, moderating these meetings. It's, it's, it's sometimes very task, you know, very challenging. But I will continue to do my best to make improvements, and I want to thank you tonight, because the tone here tonight has been very positive and has been very professional, and that's what we need to continue, uh, to do. So, um, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I don't want to make waves either. Um, I kinda wanna know what the point of this is. Is it so that we do go back and amend the minutes? I'm, I'm not sure what we are accomplishing by viewing this.
Uh, well, I, I think that's what, I, that was what I took on it, but, but, I mean, and she certainly can speak. I, I think it, um, I think we gotta, I think, I, I can't answer all that, but I think there's a motion on the floor to not review the tape tonight and to, you know, there's a traveler, by either Alderman, uh, Kinsella's suggestion, putting it in writing, and, and submitting it for a consideration to amend the minutes, or, like I said, I'm certainly open to sitting down and having a discussion. Certainly willing. Alderman Hayden?
Point of order, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Um, what Alderman Holt asked is, is a reasonable question, and it is on topic, and even though it was directed to you, if you wished to ask Alderman Schneider to answer through, through the chair, that would be proper according to, from, and I think she asked a question that's reasonable. I don't think you really meant to skip over her, her answer, but you could pass that on to Alderman Schneider if she wanted to present.
She certainly, if you want to answer that question, you certainly may.
Well, it's the only thing that I wanted to prove, that, um, you're always telling me that you're tired of my smart sarcastic remarks. You'll call on me, wait my turn. Well, in this segment, it shows you said the same thing. You'll call on me, I have to wait my turn, but you're gonna take Alderman Davidson, and then you'll come back to me, and you never did.
I, I apologize if I skipped you. I, I really, you know, we could've had that conversation some time ago. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I, I watched the video and, and that necessarily, or, or, that did indeed happen, but, uh, that's, that's been several means ago. I, I would, I, out of fairness to Ms. Schneider, I, I would like possibly to, to ask her if, if she feels that you, you obviously apologized here for, for missing her, if she'd be willing to consider at this time, uh, removing a request, and, and the reason that I'm asking for that is because now, Your Honor, we, we, in the spirit of cooperation, we have a motion to deny her request, and now that's gonna possibly, uh, pit, uh, Alderman either choosing to vote with her or against her, and, and that, that, that's not a constructive thing that, that we're doing here either.
Well, I mean, she made the request, so I, I wanna make sure you know that I put it on the agenda.
I, I understand.
So we're offering that. If she wishes to withdraw her, her request for, uh, making the decision on reviewing it...
She's willing to accept that, that you've acknowledged that and apologized, that she's willing to, to remove that request, then we can have a removal of, of the motion, and we can move on.
Well, you heard me say, I'm willing to, I'm willing to sit and talk with her, and I, I certainly did not mean to skip her.
I mean, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but I...
So it's, it's up to you.
It's not, it's not that you apologized. You're saying we're willing to talk. I, for once, wanted to show you that the reason I have to raise my hand and blurt out is because you are never looking over here. Alderman Holt has made that observation before. She has come up and talked to you in the city attorney. And this was just one way of proving to you that that's what you do.
If it makes everyone feel better, and I'll be sincere as I can be...
The motion's been made. I will take it from further things. The motion's been made. Take the roll call.
Yes, ma'am, but I will make this comment, since I've been put on the spot here. I am apologizing, and we'll have the vote then, that if you believe that I purposely skipped over you, I, I'm sorry if you feel that way. But, you know, we're moving on. So we now have a vote. Roll call. No, we've had, we're, we're, okay, go ahead.
You've got the opportunity to defend yourself. I just wanted to clarify that I was not taking sides. I was just making a comment to you that, in my observation, it seemed like your body language slightly favors this side, not that you were favoring one side or the other. That's all.
Alderman White.
Can we just have a re-clarification of the, of the, uh, motion that's on there?
There's a simple motion to not view the tape tonight, and, and to not be, go into this and relive it tonight, but to either do it in writing or to schedule a meeting so we can talk further. So I think there's two alternatives to the, to, if, if the council chooses not to, if you vote to, if nine of you vote, or, like, whatever it takes to, uh, to vote to, uh, to view it, then, then our technician over here is ready to, to fire up the screen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just got a little confused.
Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider. So you're voting present?
President, I'm not voting.
Okay. The ayes have it. Okay. And, and, um, I'm still, if you call, I'll be still willing to talk to you. We move on to Ms. Lance's new business. We have...
Hold on, a couple of things under old business, Your, Your Honor, real quick.
Okay.
Um, can you give me, uh, a rundown? We had a meeting this morning, uh, and I, I think there's some confusion of the facts. When, when is, uh, when is the West Main continuous streetscape in your mind gonna be started and, and completed from Sixth Street to Seventeenth Street?
Well, the engineering's going on right now. So we'd have to put it in the budget next year, but we have one point one million, Tim?
Yes.
We have one point one million this council has received, um, and, and we approved that and, and, and awarded the engineering probably more than a year ago, maybe, boy, maybe going on eighteen months ago. And the engineering should be complete, uh, during our budget process, and, and then we'd have the opportunity to see how we can fit it in and where the funds are available to match the one point one million. I don't know how much we have to match exactly, but it depends on just how much this council decides to, uh, embellish the streetscape.